I'd like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. I would like to announce that we will be going into executive session to discuss personnel matters. After we consider the first two items on the public meeting agenda, we will then reconvene in public session after the executive session. Now, I would like to read the following notice into the record. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and meetings of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in each of the five boroughs, at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphones or BlackBerrys? Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will also be available as a podcast within 24 hours and will be available on the CUNY website. This is our first meeting since Chancellor Matthew Goldstein announced his intention to step down early this summer. Our Chancellor began this journey with many of us 14 years ago, at a time when my task force report, I think accurately described CUNY as an institution adrift. Although he began the job with both a distinguished academic and administrative record, I think few of us could have imagined at that time that he would accomplish so much in so many ways that have lifted CUNY beyond our highest expectations. I have said on several occasions that he is the finest public higher education chancellor in the country, and that is no exaggeration. I also believe it is fair to say that he is the greatest chancellor in the history of the City University. There will be appropriate times in the future to elaborate in greater detail, but suffice it to say, Matt, on behalf of all of us, that CUNY is a far better and improved place because of you. We thank you for your service. On behalf of all the members of the Board, I would like to welcome interim Chancellor-designate William Kelly to this afternoon's meeting. Thank you for agreeing to work with us closely during this time of transition. I know you will hit the ground running on July 1st, 2013. Before I turn to the Board's regular agenda for this meeting, I want to introduce two resolutions of extraordinary importance to this university. Let me read out loud the Resolved section and first paragraph of the Explanation section of the first resolution, which is at your places around the table. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the Colin L. Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership. The Colin L. Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership is named after General Colin L. Powell, USA, the founder and chair of the Colin L. Powell Center for Leadership and Service at the City College of New York. General Powell, I think CUNY's most distinguished living alumnus, has dedicated his life in service to others. For the past decade, he has tirelessly worked to support the Colin L. Powell Center for Leadership and Service, to provide CCNY's students with extraordinary support and a great opportunity. May I have a second to the motion?
I second it.
Thank you. May I call first on Chancellor Matthew Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. General, you've been a friend of mine for a long time and a great counsel to me and others in the university. You've never forgotten your roots. I believe you graduated in '57, around the time, '58? And since that year, you've been connected with the college as you have risen up the ladder of a great hero and a great American, and I can't think of anybody that we feel more fortunate than you to name this important school. So, thank you for agreeing to lend your name, and thank you on behalf of the City University of New York and all the future students who are going to come and learn about your distinguished career. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. May I call on President Lisa for a few words?
Thank you. General Powell, Colin, I feel extremely privileged. I feel humbled. You are not only a true American hero and international statesman, but you are the truest of sons of City College. You show that no matter what your background, no matter where you're from, you can do anything in this world. Your integrity and your friendship mean so much to me, so much to the students of City College, and I can't think of a better person. You are my hero. Thank you.
Are there questions or discussion on the resolution? If not, I'll ask for the vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Abstentions? Colin L. Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership now exists. General, would you like to say?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. This is indeed a great honor. I only wish my parents were still around to see this. But you know, in my career, I've often been asked, "How did you do it? How did you make it?" You know, you're born in Harlem, raised in the Bronx, and you were able to rise to the top of the military profession and to the top of the diplomatic profession. And what were the secrets? How did it all happen? There were two things that really did it. One, I had parents and a family that kept me in play as a kid, growing up in the South Bronx. And I benefited from a public education system that brought me from kindergarten all the way through the City College of New York, at no expense to me and no expense to my parents. Because the people of this city, the people of this state, recognize that there is no greater responsibility for any government than to educate the next generation of leaders. And so throughout my career, I have always given credit to the public school system and especially to the City College of New York for keeping me in play and giving me a quality education. A quality education I didn't know I was getting at the time. And after I became a senior official in the Army, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, I would visit countries around the world, and I would get the question often that said, "Well, what year did you graduate from West Point?" And I said, "Well, I didn't get into West Point. I couldn't have dreamed of applying to West Point." Well, how about some of the other great military schools that we have in the southern part of our country? And I said, "Well, in those days, a black kid couldn't go to those schools." "Well, then where did you go?" I said, "City College, New York." "Where's that?" "It's in Harlem, about a mile from where I was born." And I got a great education. I got an education that was based on liberal arts. I got a bachelor's science degree. And when I went to my first posting at Fort Benning, Georgia, and I had to compete with young lieutenants from West Point, from all of the great military colleges, from Princeton, you name it, I discovered then, you know, I got a pretty good education at CCNY. And I was able to compete, and I was able to do my very, very best. Because the other thing CCNY and the New York City Public School System taught me goes to some of the comments that were made a few moments ago, that if you believe in yourself, and if you believe in this country, and if you believe that you can achieve in this country, then go for it. Work hard, do your best, and see what happens. I entered the Army just a few years after segregation officially ended. I was part of the first generation of minority officers, black officers, at the end of segregation. And what they said to me was, "We don't want to hear any hard luck stories about you were born in Harlem, raised in the Bronx, immigrant parents, you were poor, all that stuff, save it for somebody else. The only thing we care about is performance." And I learned in City College of New York that performance is all that counts, and that's all I ever asked for. And so I'm deeply grateful and feel so indebted to this city and to the taxpayers of the city for giving me such an opportunity that I can now give back to CCNY and to the City of New York, the remainder of the time that I have here. The center started out being modest. It grew. It started to affect the entire college. It started to affect other colleges, and that's when Lisa came forward with the idea of making it a school. And it's going to be a school just like the center, which is focused on the kids, focused on the students. It's not going to be putting out papers. It's not going to be doing -- it's going to be focusing on these young people who are going to be the leaders of the city and the leaders of America in one generation. And we have no greater responsibility than to give these kids the best education we possibly can, just as was done for me so many years ago. When I came back to City College after I stepped down as Secretary of State to see what was going on in the center that had been named after me, I sat in a conference room with the President at that time, Greg Williams, and about 20 students were in the room, and they all told me their story, where they had come from, how they were working hard, what they wanted to be in life. And when they all went around the table and came back to me, I just thought, "God, they're just like I was 50 years ago. So now I have to invest in them as others earlier had invested in me." And we have no greater obligation. So I'm deeply thankful. I thank the Board for this honor, and I look forward to working with CCNY in the months and years ahead. Thank you so much.
General, I want to thank you on behalf of everyone on the Board and indeed everyone at CUNY for your extraordinary dedication, your tremendous personal generosity. You contributed a very substantial amount of your own personal funds to the well in excess of $30 million that has been raised for the support of your school. So we thank you very, very much for your help in putting together. That is one of the most significant gifts in the history of the university. So thank you, sir, for that. The second extraordinary resolution that we have to take up today calls for the establishment of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College and the Gutman Student Success and Engagement Fund. The resolution reads that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby accepts a gift of $25 million from the Stella and Charles Gutman Foundation and authorizes the General Counsel to execute the agreement, setting forth both the terms and conditions of said gift. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the Gutman Student Success and Engagement Fund and the Gutman Transfer Scholarship Fund as endowments in perpetuity in accordance with the agreement. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby renames the new community college, the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College, in accordance with the agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
May I call on the Chancellor to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the sterling success that this university achieved when we initiated the ASAP, the Accelerated Study of Associate Programs, it occurred to me that we had something quite remarkable going on at this university, and that we would learn more and be able to do more had we developed a new community college that would derive many of its values and ideas from ASAP. I went to my staff, Mr. Chairman, and they said, "Oh, here he goes again." But we were successful in getting a new community college, the first such community college approved by the State Education Department in 40 years. We recruited Scott Evanbeck to be our founding president. And then, unbeknownst to me, there were quiet discussions going on with the Gutman Foundation. And I was asked to meet with the President and the Executive Director, who were here with us this evening, Mr. Rubenstein and Ms. Olafson. They grilled me for a good hour and 15 minutes about, you know, really getting into the weeds with me about this campus. And I can't thank the two of you for your leadership enough in having confidence in us to carry the name of the Gutman family in perpetuity in this important community college. It has become the talk of the town in the world of community colleges about what we aspire to do and how we are challenging orthodoxy with innovations that were not tried before. So I thank you for your largesse, and I thank you for your confidence, and we will not let you down. This community college will continue to inspire all of us, not only here at the City University of New York, but really changing public policy about the importance of this asset class of higher education that I think is becoming more and more known and appreciated among all of us in higher education.
May I ask President Scott Evanbeck to say a few words?
I join our faculty, staff, and students in thanking the Stella and Charles Gutman Foundation for their unprecedented generosity, a gift that will provide the margin of excellence in coupling access and success in the community college. It's great to welcome and thank Ernest Rubenstein and Elizabeth Olafson, whose support builds on the vision of the Chancellor and the Board in creating this new college. We've learned much from CUNY's other colleges and thank them for their support, and we thank John Mogalescu, Tracy Mead, and the Presidents of our other community colleges who did so much in the building of this college. We will be proud to live off the legacy of Stella and Charles Gutman's commitment to the betterment of New York City as we continue to build the college in their name. Thank you.
You have the resolution, and it has been seconded. Are there questions or comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution is unanimously adopted. Let me take -- it gives me a great deal of personal pleasure to welcome an old friend, President Ernest Rubenstein, and Executive Director Elizabeth Olafson. President Rubenstein, would you care to say a few words?
This is more than I bargained for. I want to start by thanking Elizabeth, who spent two years leading our due diligence effort, interviewing just about every organization that deals with college education, the City of New York, every organization that tries to help poor kids get into, remain in, and succeed at college. She has done a fantastic job, and when you study the components of this gift, which is not a simple one, there are three separate pieces, but they all fit together beautifully, you'll see what a marvelous job Elizabeth did in crafting this. We ended up in a place which is about 180 degrees from where we started. When I first thought of devoting a good part of the foundation's endowment, it ended up at 50 percent. I would have gone for 100 percent personally, but I only had one vote. I was looking at the extreme right end of the bell curve, and to try to find those poor kids who had enormous talent and whose career should be subsidized. But the more we studied this, the more I realized those kids are going to get into the top colleges anyway. There's loads of money available for their scholarships. And I started to worry about the kids at the other end of the bell curve. And then I heard a speech of the New York Historical Society by Neil Ferguson last year, the noted historian, now at Harvard. And someone asked him, "Professor Ferguson, aren't you concerned about the enormous disparities of wealth in this country? The disparity is getting worse, not better." And he said, "That doesn't worry me as much as the need to ensure that the ladder or escalator for social and economic elevation remains available to poor kids. That's what's important, because if you don't have that, then you're sowing the seeds of a society that will be less stable perhaps in future years." So we ended up where we did. I'm delighted. I think the Gutmans, had they lived, if they were alive, would be delighted. And one reason, this is terribly important to me, is the Gutmans died without children. They don't have a family. And I always felt that the foundation was their DNA, and it was our obligation to preserve their name associated with good deeds. And I think CUNY will be around 50 and 100 years from now, as will its colleges, and they will continue to carry the Gutman name, and that's enormously important to me. So, on the theory that it's better to give than to receive, Elizabeth and I are happier than you folks are, and we're just delighted to be here and so happy that you found this proposal acceptable. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank our distinguished guests for attending the first part of our public meeting this evening, and we're very grateful to you for your many, many, many gifts and that you've bestowed on the university. I'd like now to adjourn the public meeting to go into executive session regarding personnel matters, because several trustees have to leave early tonight, so we're taking it up earlier than usual. This public hearing of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York is hereby reconvened. I have a few announcements. I'm delighted to announce that Kingsborough Community College was named one of the top four community colleges, which received the Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. Kingsborough was chosen from a pool of over 1,000 participating colleges nationwide by the Aspen Institute. Congratulations to President Peruggi and his entire community. Congratulations to trustee Rita DiMartino, who was conferred an international award as diplomat, civil society leader, and corporate executive by Dialogue on Diversity on March 20th. This award recognized her excellence in statesmanship and philanthropy, advancing the causes of women in education and international scholarly exchange and in health care in its global dimensions. Congratulations will be in order for trustee Ugo M. Morales, who has accepted recognition as a Beacon of Hope honoree. He will be honored at the National Seniors and National Services Appreciation Day event on May 10th. Congratulations to trustee Morales. I want to thank trustee Rita DiMartino, trustee Ugo Morales, and trustee and university student senate chair Kafue Kuakua for participating in the Somos el Futuro event in Albany during the weekend of March 22nd through March 24th. Thank you very much. I also want to thank trustee Kathleen Pasili for representing CUNY for the 13th year at its Big Apple Jobs Fair this past Friday, April 26th, held at the Jacob Javits Conference Center. This is a great program that brings CUNY students in contact with prospective employers. On behalf of the Board, I would like to extend our best wishes for a speedy recovery to trustee Morales' son, Ugo, who is receiving medical care at Jacobi Hospital. Our thoughts are with you and your wife Gladys, trustee Morales. We deeply mourn in the loss of Gerald W. Lynch, former president of John Jay College of Criminal Justice, who passed away on April 17th after a brief illness. Dr. Lynch was John Jay College's longest-serving president from 1975, when he was named Acting President, then formally sworn in as president in 1977, and led the college until his retirement in 2004. We are saddened by the passing of former New York State Board of Regents member Joseph Bowman during the second week in April after a long illness. He was a great friend of CUNY, who was known as a pioneer in developing access to the Internet, to libraries, as well as underserved communities. Our hearts go out to the family of President William Pollard, whose father, Mr. Linwood Pollard, passed away on the morning of March 6th. May I now call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Baruch College MBA program jumped to number 75 from last year's number 97 in the top 100 best graduate schools of business by U.S. News &amp; World Report. Congratulations. Three faculty members from Brooklyn College's Master of Fine Arts and Creative Writing Program have each received coveted Guggenheim fellowships recently. They are Professor Emerick Lewis Askoff, Associate Professor Benjamin Lerner, and lecturer Erin Courtney. College of Staten Island faculty member Sebastian Pog College of Staten Island faculty member Sebastian Poget received a National Science Foundation five-year grant of $1,178,046 for career structural and mechanic analysis of potassium channel modulation by a novel activating snake toxin this past March. He is the third CSI faculty member in as many years to be recognized. Daniel McCloskey received a five-year grant of $931,946 in 2012. And Vadim Agnatsian received a five-year grant totaling $450,000 the previous year. Congratulations. Queens College Center for Teaching and Learning was highlighted in the Chronicle for Higher Education as part of an article on abject orientation. Queens College sociologist Sue Jaitei Fernandez was recently interviewed by many media outlets about the death of Venezuela leader Hugo Chavez. And the head of Queens College’s Women and Work Program was profiled as an MSNBC foot soldier last month. Congratulations to them. Hunter College Associate Professor of Art Carrie Moyer was chosen from among nearly 3,000 applicants to receive a 2013 Guggenheim Fellowship in Painting. Hunter College School of Education Professor of Curriculum and Teaching and Coordinator of his adolescent social studies education program, Teri Epstein, won a Fulbright Senior Scholar Award. And Hunter College lecturer in Classical and Oriental Studies, Sue Kawashami, was awarded the Consul General of Japan Commendations for 2013. Congratulations to them. City College Distinguished Research Professor Sheldon Leinbahn was elected to the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. A recent conference at the college brought together more than 80 scientists from around the world to mark the 30th anniversary of the International Satellite Cloud Climatology Project. The conference was directed by Distinguished Professor of Electrical Engineering William Rossow, and Distinguished Professor of Civil Engineering Robert Passwell received a special New York Transportation Leaders Award from the New York chapter of the Conference of Minority Transportation Officials. Congratulations to them. And finally, Spanish-language daily newspaper El Diero recently presented its Mujeres de Taca Das, okay, Distinguished Woman Award to Dolly Martinez, Deputy to the President and Assistant Vice President for College Affairs at Hostess Community College of CUNY for her selfless work in the community and dedication to higher education. Among other awardees this year was another of CUNY’s own, the Honorable Jenny Rivera, New York State Court of Appeals Judge. Congratulations to them. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Five of the eight student CUNY debate team participating in the Cross Examination Debate Association national championships received awards. Baruch College’s Christian Torre, Brooklyn College’s William Chung, were named National Debate Scholars. And novice, first-year debaters from Baruch College, Amanda Siegel and Namaya Jeffrey, advanced to the novice breakout quarterfinal round. Congratulations. Lehman College graduate Samya Anna, who is currently studying at Harvard Medical School, is one of 30 recipients of the Selective Paul and Daisy Soros Fellowship for New Americans. Congratulations. Baruch College’s Student MFE team recently won third place at the Rothman International Trading Competition, while students from Baruch’s model United Nations team won awards for Outstanding Position Paper and Outstanding Delegation during the 2013 conference. Congratulations. Queens College graduating senior Madeline Yap received a Fulbright Fellowship to teach English in South Korea. Congratulations. Two Macaulay Honors College at Hunter College students were recently honored. Christina Navarizina received a 2013 Barry M. Goldwater Scholarship, and Anna Billingsley was selected a New York City Urban Fellow. Hunter College graduate student Megan McGrath was selected as one of the 14 American Association for the Advancement of Science Mass Media Science and Engineering Fellows for 2013. Recent Hunter graduates Amanda Colado, Arundolar Samuel Hickson, and Merrill Horn, and Tayaba Tosif, were awarded National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowships. And Mahida Alexandre was accepted to Harvard Medical School. Hunter College alumna Vanessa Ruta, 99, a neuroscientist, won a Sloan Research Fellowship. Congratulations. Grove School of Engineering Junior in Chemical Engineering Alaz Amarieva became the latest Goldwater Scholar from City College. Engineering majors Dane Christie and Rue Chen of the class of 2013, and Alexi Rudieski, Julius Edison, Arash Nowabayer, and Philip Liu of the class of 2012, all received National Science Foundation Graduate Fellowships. Students Corinne Quirk, Asha Well, and Shannon Fanucane were selected as 2013 Jeanette Watson Fellows. Congratulations. Dr. Deborah Persaud, a York College graduate, the class of 1981, is being celebrated as part of a team that may have discovered a way to functionally cure AIDS in infants. Dr. Persaud, currently a professor of infectious diseases at Johns Hopkins University of Medicine, was called upon to help study the case of a Mississippi toddler diagnosed with AIDS virus at birth, and may have been cured of the disease even though the mother had suspended treatment. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have on the table a list of grants and gifts received by the university since the February 25th, 2013 meeting. It’s available in your calendar book. I’d like to now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say first how touched I was to receive calls from all the trustees and presidents and letters and emails. I was not prepared for that outpouring of affection, and really, I want to thank all of you for that. It means much to me. When I decided, after having many conversations with myself, that I was going to step down after 14 years, I spoke to the chairman and essentially all of the trustees, and indicated that it would be my recommendation that Bill Kelly be chosen to be the interim chancellor, that I thought he had the stature and the confidence of the other presidents, and had done an extraordinary job at the graduate school. And Bill, I wish you really good, good, and you’re going to love the job. You’re going to work hard. You’re going to work hard. Your wife is not going to see you as much, but you’re going to do a wonderful job as interim chancellor, and I’m delighted to know that you’ll be in that seat, and look forward to working with the chairman and other members of the search committee behind the scenes, and helping in ways to identify candidates for the permanent position. You’ve heard that a number of our students won National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowships. I’m pleased to say that last year, we had 16 such fellowships, which by far was the largest number in our history. But this year, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, 24. It is the largest in the Northeast, and it’s got to be right up there across the United States. I don’t know if we know that number, but 24 is a remarkable achievement, and it is a testimony to the fact that this university is viewed in a very different way than it was just a few years ago, and that this could not have been, could not have happened with the, without the leadership of our presidents, attracting some extraordinary faculty that are guiding these very talented students. So I just want to share that, that good news with all of you. I think it’s something that we collectively ought to be deeply proud of. I don’t have much to say about the state budget. I’ve reported on this before, but we now have a new budget for fiscal 2014. On the operating side for the senior colleges, the enacted budget provides a little over $36 million in additional state aid, and about $60 million in increased tuition revenue. In addition, included in the appropriation is more money for the SEEK program and the Joseph S. Murphy Institute. For the community colleges, the adopted budget increases base aid per student by $150 to $2,422. This will generate for our community colleges a little over $12 million for next fiscal year. In the budget agreement ASAP was given a shout-out by, by the governor and supported by the legislature for $1.7 million for ASAP. In addition, there was $2 million allocated for the Next Generation New York Job Linkage Program. The legislature increases childcare by about $544,000. Mr. Chairman, I want to just thank the governor in particular here for giving us the opportunity to have a stable financial environment. I leave the university as chancellor knowing that there is great stability on a going-forward basis. Our balance sheet has probably not been as strong for some time, and our giving continues to be on target to finish our very aggressive capital campaign of about $3 billion. On the city side, Mayor Bloomberg is expected to issue his FY 2014 executive budget proposal later this week. We have been asked to provide testimony to the city council’s Higher Education and Finance Committee on May 10th, where I will testify on behalf of the university. I’d also like to thank those who testified on behalf of the university on the cost and benefits of MOOCs before the New York City Council Higher Education Committee, and people who did a terrific job, Ann Kirshner from our Honors College, George Adi of Academic Affairs at the CUNY School of Public Professional Studies, Curtis Kendrick, University Dean for Libraries and Information Resources, and Jen Wang, a professor at John Jay College. I’m also pleased to advise the board that we have reached an agreement, finally, with the PSC, to implement a pilot phase retirement program. This program will allow tenured faculty who have 15 years of service at CUNY and are 65 years old or older to work 50 percent of their regular schedule and receive 50 percent of their salary, and this plan will go on for three years. A more limited option is available for certain members of the non-teaching and instructional staff. We were quite pleased to be able to extend this benefit, which many other universities have, to our long-serving faculty, and we’re hoping that our faculty will be able to fully explore their retirement options while still being active members of the teaching force at CUNY. The one who really carried this for us arduously was our wonderful vice chancellor Pam Silverplatt, who has a lot more patience than I do, for sure, and she did really an extraordinary job, and thank you, Pam. This was a long time in coming, and you deserve so much of the credit. Last week, I participated, as did so many people, in the launch of CUNY’s 11th Citizenship Now Call-In Program, an unprecedented public service partnership with the Daily News that is one of the now unlimited brainchild of Jay Hirschensohn. He just spews out very, very creative ideas, and this is one of his great creative ideas. I want to thank also professor, to Professor Alan Warnock, who has been indefatigable in his efforts to really bring this program to national attention. This year, this year in the last week, we serviced over 13,000 people through this largest call-in in the nation, and so far, about 125,000 people have been helped by the Citizenship Now Call-In. So Jay, I really want to thank you again for coming up with this very important, you’re really changing lives in a way. We have a number of searches going on, and I am committed to getting all of these done, except one, because we, I just gave the charge today to the committee that is chaired by trustee Peter Pantaleo, as we seek to replace the irreplaceable, I think, Steve Shepard at the Graduate School of Journalism. Medgar Evers, ably chaired by trustee Valerie Beal. We have about 50 people who have expressed interest in being the next president of Medgar Evers College, and within that pool of 50, we have some really fabulous people with much experience in higher education and deeply committed to the unique mission that Medgar Evers plays. And I want to thank you, Valerie, for the fine work that you’re doing, and we will make an appointment at the June board meeting. Valerie and I have promised to make that happen. The School of Public Health Committee has now suggested a small group of finalists that are making visits to the participating schools that make up the School of Public Health. I want to thank Lexa Logue, who is chairing that search, and our partner Jennifer Rab, who will play a very significant role, as we know, going forward in this very important school. The CUNY Job Apple you heard about, the Job Apple Fair, this was the 25th anniversary. Trustee Pacilli, as you heard, has been there as long as she’s been on the board, and a great help. Trustee, former trustee Edith Everett, was there right at the beginning, and I think this was, again, one of Jay Hirschensohn’s ideas, and so thank you again, Jay. We had Labor Commissioner Peter Rivera as the commence, as the speaker, and he did a great job, really thanking all of the employers who were there, and greeting the students who are leaving CUNY and entering the job force. And let me conclude that, again, CUNY TV was awarded more And let me conclude that, again, CUNY TV was awarded more New York Emmy Awards. I don't know how, what that count is, but we may at some point need to get a new building just to accommodate all of these awards. The several, several of our signature series, Nuueva York, Canapé, Science &amp; You, and Study with the Best, were singled out for their, their awards. And I think that, that's enough, Mr. Chairman, because my voice is about to come.
All right. Are there, are there comments or questions for the chancellor on his report? All right, thank you, Mr. Chancellor. We'll turn now to the policy items requiring a vote. First, I'll move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for April 29th, 2013, including addenda, errata, and table items. You have a copy of this report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments on the university report?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that trustee Joe Loda has recused himself from voting on this item.
All right. Other comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. I'll next move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting, an executive session of February 25th, 2013. You have a copy of the draft minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any revisions that needed to this, that anyone, huh? All right, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to our committee reports. I'll call first on trustee Peter Pantaleo to present items from the Fiscal Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs and the Subcommittee on Investment met on April 8th, 2013, chaired by the vice chair of the Fiscal Affairs Committee, myself. Following the approval of the minutes of the Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting of February 4th, 2013, the committee approved the following resolutions. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in the pre-health professions post-baccalaureate certificate program at the School of the Arts and Sciences at Hunter College, effective with the fall 2013 semester as follows. Resident full-time students, $500 per semester. Resident part-time students, $50 per credit. Non-resident full-time and part-time students, $90 per credit. The very inartfully named post-baccalaureate certificate program at the School of Arts and Sciences at Hunter Colleges, College is a highly competitive program which challenges students to rigorous coursework in the sciences and mathematics to prepare them for applying to doctoral programs in the health professions. The revenue generated from these fees will add to the quality of support services such as the outreach of academic and career advising services and augment the program with tools to enhance its standing among post-baccalaureate pre-medical programs throughout New York City. Hunter's tuition in this program is far less than those at comparable programs in schools such as NYU and Columbia. The college will continue to administer financial assistance to help students with the completion of their studies. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3A.
Happy to second that. Are there questions on the item for the committee? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3A carries.
Mr. Chairman, there were two so-called walk-on resolutions brought forward for consideration by the committee. The first one is listed as calendar item 3B, is a resolution requesting that the city University of New York adopt a schedule of academic excellence fees for students in the Master of Science and Accounting Program in the School of Arts and Sciences at Hunter College, effective with the fall 2013 semester as follows. Okay. They are the same as they were, Mr. Chairman, in the, the other, the, in item 3A. 500 per semester for full-time, $50 per credit for part-time, and $90 per credit. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Secretary, may I have, I'm missing a page here. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Since its inception in 2006, the Master in Science and Accounting Program has grown and has over 100 active students. The demand for the program continues to be strong as ever, more potential, as more potential employers look for students who have fulfilled the CPA education requirement. The additional funding will be used to improve and augment the program with technology skills, expanded access to research databases and digital tools, research workshops, and career development, including networking events. The college will continue to administer financial aid to assist students with the completion of their studies. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3B.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 3B? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3B carries.
The second walk-on resolution listed as calendar item 3C is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the General Counsel to execute a university-wide contract with New York 3Rs Association, NY3R, for the delivery of CUNY library materials. NY3R, on behalf of its members, including CUNY and SUNY, procured the services of Velocity Express LLC pursuant to a public solicitation process to provide library material delivery services. CUNY shall expend an amount not to exceed $805,000 during the, during the potential seven-year contract payable in seven annual installments and chargeable to the central office, the Office of Libraries, Central Office, Office of Library Services. The university will have the right to terminate the contract at any time in its best interest. NY3R is a not-for-profit 503(c) corporation that receives funding from New York State to provide a range of important library services and programs. SUNY has entered into a similar contract for these services at comparable rates. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3C.
I'm happy to second that. Are there questions on item 3C? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 3C is adopted.
Chairman, following the approval of items 3A, 3B, and 3C, the Subcommittee on Investment was convened. After approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Subcommittee of February 4th, 2013, and an investment update by Chief Investment Officer Janet Crone on the university's portfolio performance through February 28th, 2013, there followed deliberations on spending for fiscal year 2014. Following these discussions, the meeting was adjourned to go into executive session for a briefing on recommended changes to the university's investment policy guidelines. After resuming the public meeting, the Subcommittee approved the fiscal year 2014 spending rate for the CUNY investment pool as well as an amended, as well as the amended investment policy guidelines. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will now present for the board's approval the items that the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered at its meeting on April 8th. Please be advised that a matter came to our attention after our meeting that we believe the board should consider today, which has been added to the calendar. Another item that we reviewed at our meeting has been removed from today's revised calendar, which I would like to clarify. As the chancellor reported earlier, on February, April, on Friday, April 26th, Vice Chancellor Pamela Silverblatt reached an agreement with the Professional Staff Congress on a phased retirement program to allow tenured faculty age 65 and older to phase into retirement. The negotiated agreement renders the board's consideration of a pre-retirement leave with partial pay policy unnecessary. I will now continue with the report. Item 4A amends the governance plan of the City College of New York to provide the Chair of the Faculty Committee on Personnel Matters and the Chair of the Executive Committee on Faculty Senate with voting rights on the review committee, which is the college-wide personnel and budget committee and the highest-level committee involved in making recommendations on personnel matters. To ensure faculty representation on the review committee, the non-voting status of the faculty representatives will be changed to voting status. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 4A? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? 4A is adopted.
Thank you. Items 4B through 4H involve naming opportunities at a number of our colleges, which I will present as a group. I would like to note that the monetary gifts associated with these matters total $5 million. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration is pleased to recommend their approval. They are as follows. The William Coeger Deanship in the Zicklin School of Business at Baruch College, the Anne Spitzer Reading Room at Hunter College, the Dr. Stowe Whitman Hausner Study Room at Hunter College High School, the Barry Commoner Center for Biology of Natural Systems at Queens College, and the Hammel Family Classroom, the Gregory and Diana Costner Reference Desk, and the Solomon Slatkin Classroom at the CUNY School of Law. Mr. Chair, I present items 4B through 4H for the board's approval.
I will second those. Are there any questions for the committee on those items? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items are adopted.
The following matter came in too late for review at our April 8th meeting, but is of time-sensitive nature, and so is being brought directly before the board for consideration. Please refer to the added item in the calendar. Item 4I creates a new institutional title called Professor of Military Science. The university is working with the United States Army to establish a Senior Reserve Officers Training Corps, SROTC, to be based at City College. The Army does not allow its employees to be compensated by an academic institution, but wants the senior commissioned officer assigned to the SROTC to have the title of professor. In order to meet the Army's requirements, the new institutional staff title called Professor of, I'm sorry, the new instructional staff title called Professor of Military Science will be established as a non-tenure-track title and will not have any compensation or employment status with the university. Creation of this new title requires an amendment to Section 6.1 of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees. We are also asking that the board waive the notice of amendment requirements in Section 5.1 of the bylaws. Mr. Chair, I present item 41 for the board's approval.
I'll second item 4I. Are there questions on this bylaw change or the waiver? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That item is adopted.
And finally, Mr. Chair, just a point of privilege. With regard to the Medgar Evers College search, I'd just like to say, for those of us who have been involved in presidential searches over the last decade, I can just say that as a result of Chancellor Goldstein's leadership and what this university has done, the pool of candidates that we are seeing now is just, is wonderful and deep, and it's a real tribute to everyone in this room as to the quality and the depth of candidates that we're now seeing in these presidential searches. So it's a pleasure to serve, and I look forward to continuing the search and completing it in June. Thank you.
Any further items to report?
No, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its April 8th, 2013 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar number item 5A, resolution to establish the CUNY Institute for Computer Simulation, Stochastic Modeling, and Optimization at Hunter College. The work of this institute will involve multiple academic disciplines, mathematics, computer science, business, and engineering. The institute will conduct a variety of research projects dealing with computer simulation, stochastic modeling, and optimization. This research will be of direct benefit to government and private industry. The research projects will be conducted involving students at all levels, from undergraduate freshmen to postgraduate students. Calendar number 5B, resolution to confer honorary degrees at Baruch College, Brooklyn College, City College, College of Staten Island, the Graduate School, Hunter College, John J. College, Lehman College, Macaulay Honors College, and Queens College. Baruch College wishes to confer an honorary degree of Doctor of Letters degree upon Gillian Ted Book Offer, an award-winning journalist of the Financial Times, and an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon General Wesley Clark, retired general of the U.S. Army. Brooklyn College wishes to confer an honorary degree of Fine Arts degree upon Kate Rothko Prizzell, Brooklyn College class of 1973, physician and champion of the arts. Civic College wishes to confer an honorary degree, honorary Doctor of Science degree upon Martin Cohen, CCNY class of 1970, co-chairman and co-CEO of Cohen &amp; Steers, Inc., and Chair of the City College 21st Century Foundation. City College also wishes to confer a Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon Mo Yan, a Chinese novelist and 2012 Nobel, Nobel Laureate in Literature. The College of Staten Island wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon both Elizabeth Dubowski, it is executive director of the Staten Island Foundation, and Toine Falola, a scholar of African history. The college also wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Science degree upon Francis Allen, a scholar, scholar in the field of computer science. The Graduate School wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon Robert Wilson, an avant-garde theater director and playwright. Hunter College wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Fine Arts degree upon Anne Pasternak, president and artistic director of Creative Time. John J. College wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Laws degree upon both Peter Newfield and Barry Shack, who are co-directors of the Innocence Project. Lehman College wishes to confer an honorary degree, honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon both Francis Binkie, president of Natural Resources Defense Council, thank you, and Fernando A. Pico, a historian of Puerto Rico and the Caribbean. Number, Macaulay Honors College wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon Virginia Slaughter, philanthropist and higher education advocate, and upon Ronald Levy, President Lincoln Center for the Performing Arts. Queens College wishes to confer an honorary Doctor of Humane Letters degree upon Diane Ravitch, research professor of education at New York University and historian of education. Item number 5A and 5B were both approved by the committee, and I recommend their approval by the board.
I'm happy to second those items. Are there questions on them for the committee? Comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Information items. Dr. Logue gave an update on three items. First, students are currently registering for Common Core courses that have been approved as part of New York General Education Framework, which is itself a part of Pathways Initiative to smooth credit transfer among the CUNY campuses. The colleges are also modifying some of their degree programs to comply with Pathways. The Pathways Initiative will be in full effect by fall 2013, as required by the June 2011 Board of Trustees resolution. Second, a team of faculty and administrators at Medgar Evers College, along with colleagues from the Central Office of Academic Affairs and two outside consultants, are working on a monitoring report required for Medgar's Evers by the Middle States Association due to Middle States having placed the college on warning. This is a, this is every expectation, there's every expectation that the monitoring report will be of the highest quality. Third, Dr. Logue announced that the Office of Academic Affairs, along with other CUNY administrator officers- administrator offices, has successfully moved to its new location on East 42nd Street. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. I'd like to call on trustee Kate Pacilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs has one item for the board's approval. The committee met on April 8, 2013, and approved calendar item number six. Calendar item six, John J. College of Criminal Justice, student activity fee increase. Student activity fee schedule represents an increase of $50 for full-time undergraduate students, $40 for part-time undergraduate students, and $30 for graduate students. The proposal increases are designed to build a comprehensive student activities program with additional funding for student involvement through the student government, student clubs, and several departments in student affairs to support the student engagement. This is the first student activity fee at the college since 1988. In accordance with Board Bylaws, Section 16.2, a referendum was held in conjunction with student government elections on March 11 through the 14 of 2013. The vote on the referendum was 995 in favor and 617 opposed, with an 11% of the eligible student body voting. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report on calendar item number six.
Do you need a motion to adopt the increased fee?
Yes.
I'll second it. Questions for the committee? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That's adopted.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have an informational item, if I may. I would like to share this with the board. At the annual Somos el Futuro conference in Albany last month, students from the Ernesto Malave Leadership Academy were recognized for their outstanding service in the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy, with citations from the New York State Assembly at an awards luncheon. The citations were presented by Assembly member Felix Ortiz. Additionally, 20 students from the Malave Leadership Academy's CUNY Corps recently returned from their alternative spring break in Syracuse, New York, where they partnered with Habitat for Humanity to rebuild a home for a family in need. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following resolution came in too late for prior review at the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management meeting scheduled for April 8. Therefore, it is being brought to the Board of Trustees for consideration tonight. There is a lease renewal in agreement at 111 Washington Avenue in Albany, New York, on behalf of the Central Administration. This resolution will approve the execution of a five-year lease renewal for approximately 2,206 rentable square feet of space at 111 Washington Avenue. The university's Office of Government Relations has used this office space since July 1, 1986, when conducting official business in Albany. The current lease agreement will expire on June 30, 2013, and the new agreement will extend the lease for an additional five-year period. I hereby request your approval of this calendar item.
I'll second that motion. Are there questions on the lease? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That item is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
I'd like to provide the board with an information item, which requires no vote, but the Executive Committee met on April 23, 2013, to consider three items recommended by the Chancellor, which the committee unanimously determined that it would be detrimental to the university to delay their advancement. You'll find these actions taken as items 8A, B, and C. They are laid out for you, starting on page 12 of your board calendar books. We will now vote on the resolutions which we discussed in executive sessions, which are available around the table. I will present and move these resolutions. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Dr. Stuart Suss as interim president of Kingsborough Community College, effective September 1, 2013, at a compensation to be recommended by the Chancellor to the board, subject to financial ability. Dr. Regina Perucci will step down as president of Kingsborough, effective August 31, 2013. Pending a completion of a search for a new president, Dr. Stuart Suss would serve as interim president. He previously served as interim president from December 19, 2011, to March 12, 2012, and he currently serves as the college's provost. We deem him highly qualified for this position. May I have a second on the resolution?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. That is carried. Second, is the second resolution I want to recommend the approval of. Resolve that the Board of Trustees appoints Dr. Chase Robinson as interim president of the Graduate School and University Center, effective July 1, 2013, at a salary to be determined by the board. As you know, the board has appointed Dr. William Kelly as interim chancellor, and now appoints Dr. Robinson as interim president of the Graduate School during the period that Dr. Kelly serves as the interim chancellor and is on leave from his position as president of the Graduate School. Since August 2008, Dr. Robinson has served as provost of the Graduate School, where he is also a distinguished professor of history. He is the leading expert of his generation on early Islamic history. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the resolution? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions?
More headed item, number, this one here, SOC scholarships.
Oh, I have one other resolution for the board. It would involve the approval of SOC scholarships, as laid out on page 13 of your board books, to a number of graduates whose names and institutions you'll find on page 13. May I have a second for this SOC scholarships?
Second.
Questions on it? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Abstentions? Those SOC scholarships are adopted, are approved. That concludes the public business for this meeting, which I hereby declare adjourned. Finally, on behalf of the board, let me thank our chancellor and express our collective gratitude for your willingness to continue to serve the university as chancellor emeritus after your retirement. Thank you very much. That concludes the meeting. (applause)